Father has... Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here today. Lord, please be with our leaders of this country and in here, Lord. Lord, please be with everyone as they travel back home. And thank you for giving your sons down on the cross for our sins. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Appreciate everybody coming in. I would like for this to be the norm so we can make sure that all the citizens hear what is going on and what is happening in our city. We're gonna do just a couple of things really quick and then we're gonna get straight into the gentleman we have asked to come and visit us tonight from GDOT. And this is gonna be an informational meeting of things that are... they are seeing that's gonna happen with the road and what we can kinda expect with part of the project that involves inside of the city at this time. So maybe we can get a whole lot of hearsay and they said and she said and he did, oh, he didn't, kinda straightened out. And we'll have some time for some questions and there may be some that you can't answer 'cause when you put a bucket in the ground and pull the dirt up, you don't know what's gonna be there. And our city is very old as Butch and I have talked about and there's a lot of different water lines that probably are not marked that we'll have to take care of and we will. But with their help and everything, it'll be about like going to Blue Ridge when there's building 515, you thought they never would finish, but when they got it fixed, it sure was nice. And I think this is what's ended up happening here. I don't see anything any different because when you've got people that are willing to come and kinda face the crowd and talk to everybody, that tells you what kinda people you've got working for you in the state. And that means a lot to me. So we'll start with the approval of amendments and we need a motion to approve those.
What's your motion?
My second.
All in favor? And the opposition? Okay? And next will be the bills for November. We need a motion to pay those bills.
I make a motion we pay the bills due for November.
Second.
All in favor? And opposed? Okay. And like I said, we're turning this a little bit upside down to make sure the gentlemen have come a long way and they'd like to get home in a decent hour tonight. So we have Mr. Grant Walruth from GDOT and Mr. Nathan Howell. And we're gonna turn it over to them. As you can see, we've got some... one of the maps here behind us. And they will kinda tell us what's going on with that and a few questions.
I'm gonna get started here and I just wanna emphasize the primary reason we're here is to answer questions, make sure we get the information out. It's not trying to convince anybody about which solution is best 'cause I'm gonna go through several and they all have their pluses, they all have their minuses, right? This is definitely not an easy question for us to answer. But we're talking about a bridge replacement on Highway 5, okay? So that's the bridge over the river. Refer to it as the concrete bridge. I've heard people talk about it as the new bridge. I find calling that the new bridge really interesting 'cause it's almost 100 years old at this point. It was built in the 1930s. But it's definitely newer than the Truss Bridge that's nearby. So those are really the two ways you can get across in McHesville, from one side of the river to the other. And that concrete bridge has got some problems and things we're watching really closely on it. We do inspections on that bridge every two years. And there's some elements in it that are starting to show some signs of age and deterioration. So it's not really something we can just let go for a long period of time because we're only one inspection away from having to limit the load that that bridge can carry. And we just said there's not a lot of good options. You can't send heavy vehicles across the Truss Bridge 'cause it's already loaded in. And the detours are quite lengthy. So you've got... Madola Road is one way you could go to get around. You've got, you know, going all the way down to Blue Ridge and then back out 60. That's really your only two ways to get around if you don't have those two bridges. I've got a couple of copies of the inspection report that I'm gonna share with the city council. If you wanna look from each end. I flagged one page in there that shows some of the photos. But something you've just gotta realize is there's some advanced deterioration on that bridge. Not that it's caused us to limit the loads on that bridge yet, but one of the things we're really worried about is the ends of those beams and how they're resting on the concrete caps. They're starting to show some spalls and some deterioration. And if something happens there when we go back out and do the next inspection, that could be the time that we have to load rate it. I don't think we would have to ever close it, but you know, if you waited 10-plus years, you may be looking at that situation as well. So we have to get a plan for how to replace that bridge. And I'll tell you, one thing that we're not really comfortable with is waiting for the truck route around McHesville to Oak. Just the time that it's gonna take for that project to start and the time that it's gonna take to actually build that project, it's too much risk to not be able to have, you know, heavier loads go across the river without taking those long detours. So we're trying to come up with a plan now to replace it. And there's not an easy answer to that. The buildings, everything in McHesville is really tightly together. There's just not enough room for us to stage the construction of a new bridge while keeping the old bridge open. We really need to replace the new bridge where the old bridges at. So that leads us to a few things that we've had to investigate. One is, you know, how do you get traffic around if that bridge is closed for a year while it's being reconstructed? We've looked at actually three different options and we're trying to scale those. We haven't picked one yet. But we're looking at the impacts of each of those. The first one's kinda way out there and I'll toss it out there and you may laugh at me for it, but we've actually looked at removing the Truss Bridge and building a replacement bridge back there that would be open only during staging. Okay? And so that Truss Bridge, it's old and we're really concerned that if you tried to disassemble that and remove it, what kinda shapes it gonna be when you put it back? So that's one we really kinda said that that's not a good option. So is there somewhere else that we could put a detour bridge in? We've looked at a couple of places. We've heard from some locals that, you know, maybe at the park and the church. That would be just to the east of the existing bridge. You can see on this map. Should be here, but I don't... up here. So possibly right around here. You know, parks are something that as a state agency and using federal dollars, we try to stay off of those protected properties. So churches, parks, those fall in those protected properties. I won't say anything's impossible. Certainly you can do anything, but that's a big lift. That's something we try to avoid at all costs. Another is even further to the east. We looked down by the Tubin Companies. Could we put a bridge across there? And when I say a bridge, we're talking a temporary structure that would only be there while we're having to replace the bridge, the Highway 5 bridge. And then we could remove it afterwards. So you know, all of the impacts we would have for that temporary crossing could be just that, that could be temporary. We could take them out when we're done. We could restore it back. Wouldn't even necessarily have to have that as right-of-way. We could have that as just an easement where we'd have that. Why does that matter? You can send passenger vehicles across the Truss Bridge, okay? That Truss Bridge can handle the passenger vehicles, the lighter weight vehicles, but doesn't leave any room for pedestrians. So if we got traffic on the Truss Bridge, you gotta assume pedestrians aren't able to get across the river. You cannot send a fire truck. You can't send heavy vehicles across it. So that means for first responders, it's a lot longer way around. I mean, you're talking about going to Blue Ridge and around 60. So that's why we're investigating those options of having some kinda temporary crossing at the rivers so that we can get the bridge built. Because again, McHesville's tight and it's really... it's not gonna be easy to build a new bridge where the old one's at. You think about the size of the cranes you're gonna have to put out there. There's not a lot of space to work. So you know, doing anything like we would normally consider like maybe half the bridge at one time, those really just don't work within these tight confines that we're trying to work in. You know, those are really the big options. I can tell you, right now, the state GDOT is leaning towards the temporary bridge down by the Tubin Company. That's not a decision we've made. We're certainly open to feedback from the city council and from others. We would love to get that before we have to make the decision. And really, that's the challenge we have. Again, it's a hard problem to solve. There's no easy answers here. There's problems with every one of them. I think the worst thing you could do is just hope the bridge doesn't develop more problems. That's really when it, you know, it's weight limited or closed and you're waiting on a project to come at that point. So I'd be glad to answer questions as best I can. Again, we don't have final decisions. This is just trying to get information out there about the options we've been looking at. And so, Mayor, if you...
Well, we are really not happy with the option of going out the street, the further out area.
By the Tubin Homes?
Yes, there are several issues there because the streets are so narrow through there.
Yes.
And there are a lot of kids around in there all the time. There's big trucks that have to go in and out there. And you either have to pull over, there's no place to pull over. So we would really rather that option be taken off the board.
So if I...
But if, you know, if we could work out the logistics, we feel like it would be better served if it was there around the park, if we can get things worked out with the church and make sure everybody there is good with what's going on. And, you know, meet back with you folks and see what the options and what it would look like. That, from what I hear, community-wise, that's the better option that we would like for the community. Logistically about the fire and rescue, first responders, we have some that are located about five miles up the road or six. They have a fire station up there around Union Church, just a little ways out Salem Road. And then also we have the one up here. There's one in Effwerth that's even closer. So you know, the big thing would be about the school bus situation and some of the first responder stuff depending upon which ambulances or things they use that could, you know, go across the old... what we always call the old bridge. Been that way ever since I was a kid. You had the old bridge, new bridge. But, you know, we still know that things have to be worked out and what's best for the community. But I feel like from our side of it, that we would like that option much better if we can get everything worked out. Of course, we would be glad to give you the easement for that one across there on our side of it. And then work it out with the church. And we're all a big community, so I think, you know, I'm sure there'll be some issues we need to work out, but I think we could probably do that.
It's absolutely too congested where you're talking about putting it on East Tennessee Avenue residential. I live at the end of that road and it will be almost impossible for me to get to in and out. And as Terry said, there's a lot of chemical trucks, pumping trucks to pump the tailing ponds that need the access to that road. It's really too congested.
And one thing I didn't say very clearly, I apologize. When I'm talking about a detour bridge, that doesn't have to be the official detour. We really are talking about something that we would expect local traffic and emergency vehicles to use to get across the river. We would certainly sign the detour for any heavy vehicles along the state routes like we would anyway. That would be the route that they would be expected to take. And it's the long route. But our real concern is how do you get emergency vehicles across? But I still appreciate the comments, though. Don't get me wrong, but I did not clarify that.
Is that the consensus from citizens about that? How do you feel about the one part?
So if you put that temporary bridge down there and the traffic comes up East Tennessee, you gonna send them uphill crest?
No.
Or how they gonna get back to 5? They gonna make that U-turn back down and...
They would have to come across and come back down 60.
They'd be coming down Hillcrest.
Yeah, some would. In different parts of the road. But we're mainly talking about the tent bridge.
Well, it would be there the whole time that the concrete bridge is being worked on, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So people coming down 5 would automatically go downhill crest and try to make that steep turn there to come out.
Just wait until they get it all fixed, yeah. It's gonna be... not be any way. Just go ahead.
On the steel bridge, Nathan and Grant, I know y'all talked about it would be maybe impossible to disassemble it. Now, I worked a lot with that steel bridge here recently trying to get refurbished, I guess you could say. And I did drop a fire truck across it when I got finished 'cause I just wanted to see if I could do it.
Glad you did.
And I did. But I was mainly washing it down to open it back up for traffic. Of course, I had to stay in the middle. Because if I got too close to the edge, I'd tear the tops off, obviously, and the trusses. It would be probably virtually impossible to make that a one-lane bridge just for pedestrian traffic, would it not?
So if you need a way to get pedestrians across, I mean, there are a lot of pedestrians in McHesville and they wanna be on both sides of the river. So that was the thought that we would look at. If we were able to locate a detour bridge, that we would have part of that bridge open for pedestrians.
How hard would it be to disas... I mean, I know it would be a huge undertaking to disassemble it 'cause I've seen it completely with no wood on it. And I guess there's no way to put an extra beam in there to make a tent bridge to keep traffic off Hillcrest and East Tennessee Avenue, just keep all the traffic mainly Blue Town, Tate Bridge Street, go right into Cochranville.
It is an option that we looked at. I gotta say, that got off the rails pretty quickly just with the concern of we'll be able to get it back when we're finished. We just... we really didn't have a lot of confidence that once you disassemble something that old, it wasn't gonna be in any shape to put it back together. And what happens if you can't? So that was an option 'cause it works great with local street network. I mean, it connects everything you want to connect and it doesn't go through a residential area. I would like for that to have been a more viable option.
And I'm just talking and I may get a little hushed here and that, but if you make a new bridge there, like the one you built on Schalfer with the nice trusses and everything, just keep it there from now on and not go back with the steel trussel. Is that an option?
How would you route Highway 5 to get it across?
No, I'm just talking about if you redone the old bridge, the steel trussel. Just completely redone the bridge and left it there.
So, yeah, put a new bridge there and then...
And don't reassemble the old one. Just make it look nice.
I mean, if that's the wish of the city and y'all want to make that request to GDOT, I can definitely run that option to ground with our team.
Because I mean, it's no lie, it cost us about $350,000 just to refurbish it with wood. It's gonna have to be refurbished with wood again probably in 15, 20 years from what... I just got it inspected by, I can't think the guy's name that inspects y'all's bridges.
Philip Jennings?
Yeah, he gave me a packet just like this and it was a good inspection. I just wanna mention that later, but he said there's always an option of building that bridge there like y'all did on Schalfer, which is very nice. Y'all did an excellent job there. But I'm just wondering in the future if y'all could help us build a new bridge there and it be the tent bridge and we don't have to worry about East Tennessee Avenue, Hillcrest, our city park. Just make that the tent bridge and let it be there from now on.
It would be a good landmark. You could use it for different things on weekends 'cause if no traffic for... you know, for things. I like that.
Terry, how long... just from the church's point of view, would it take the entire parking lot on the left-hand side of the church? Probably?
So you're facing the front door of the church?
Oh, yes.
It'd be the left-hand side, yeah.
Would it take all the way to the grass?
So we're probably looking at something that would need to be... you need to work out the grades, so don't quote me exactly on this, but just round, I think 50 to 60 feet wide. That's the width of the impact. So that wouldn't quite be the whole parking lot, but I don't know if you'd have enough room to get vehicles around it.
Okay, and estimated time that y'all would need that? What, a year you're thinking on the...
What do you think, Nathan?
I know weather and everything plays a role in it.
On accelerated schedule, 12 months, 18 months? You know, if everything goes right and that you don't run into any issues with just a standalone bridge project? The chance of standalone issues like that?
Will it be accelerated? I mean, will this project be accelerated, you think?
Who owns the lot above the church? It's open. It was an old town and the next is a motorcycle place. That's Lake Atar. That's not the church.
Turn out. Ours is the end where the parking lot ends.
That's open there. There's just open space.
There's a quintal house.
There's houses.
I actually welch my own land.
He owns that one.
You might have to take one of them.
No, I love the little house.
Well, if that's why you kinda look more further out, that's why we were kinda looking further out is because that was there instead of... you didn't have a house in there. We could did something.
Our house is across the street.
Yeah, across the street, but we wouldn't have to impact it.
Well, the surveying looks like you would, but the markings for the surveys has been done in front of our house across the street from the rafting company.
Is that the place you were looking at? That's probably...
There's surveying it. So surveys go bigger than the area we'll actually have to impact because we're trying to make sure how we can tie in all the grades. But right now, they're just...
There's a lot of space in the other church.
Okay. But what's on the other side of the river then? What was on the other side of the river at that point? That's the boat.
Plus the park. Straight across from the park.
I gotta tell you, you know, a park is typically taboo for any kind of, you know, state, federal dollars or spending. We try to stay off of them, but I'm not saying we can't investigate it.
It's over and off.
Yeah. It gets into a federal process called 4F and it's...
So I have some questions just about kinda the timeline. Have those always been the three viable options? Like I know we've been talking about this bridge for a long time. So timetable-wise, have those always been the three options? 'Cause we've just now seen surveys in the last year.
So I mean, the fourth option would be to just add the offside detour, just have the bridge closed.
But you've been looking across the rafting place the entire time. I mean, I'm just trying to make it make sense.
Sure. I mean, full disclosure, I was in the earliest conversations when we started talking about that area and that has been a few months. It hasn't been a year. I don't know the exact time we started talking about it, but it's just options we're looking at.
Sure, no, I understand. I appreciate you guys coming. In my not, you know, working, not being an engineer, it seems like the most viable option is as close to the current bridge as possible. And I know you guys are looking at things, you know, from the 5,000-feet level. That the road that you're talking about dumping a state highway on temporarily, there are no sidewalks. It is not wide enough to be patrolled by our city police, much less state patrols or county. And I mean, you see the folks here, right? They're trying to pull out of their driveway, right? And it's 20 miles an hour. And you guys are just discussing, and I appreciate all the options, but you're discussing dumping a state highway for at least a year and a half, almost a mile into a residential neighborhood with no sidewalks, with a lot of elderly folks who are coming and going. So I, like the mayor said, I would like for your most likely option to now become your least likely option. And I understand you want to await a park because of state and federal taboo, but it's our park. It's a city park. So the city folks are saying, gosh, take the park for a year because that's least disruptive to our community, to children, to elderly folks. I think that's gonna be the consensus. And I'm asking you, if that is not what you guys decide, will you then tell us an appeal process for GDOT?
Sure. This is going to the highest level, obviously.
I understand that.
This is not gonna be made at, you know, at even my level. I mean, it...
I'm a project manager, so I know that. And I am not attacking you. Please know that, but...
If I could, just clear about one thing that you said, okay? So we're not detoring state route traffic. It is gonna be a bridge for emergency services for local traffic, but that is not gonna be signed as any kinda detour.
But who's gonna patrol that? Who's gonna keep people from doing that? 'Cause it's the quickest option.
It absolutely will not accommodate tractor trailers. We are gonna sign a detour route that's a state route.
I don't know how much time you've spent here, but we have grown exponentially in local traffic. So even though it's local traffic, it's a whole lot of folks.
I'm not arguing with what you're saying. I just wanna say we're not planning to detour state route onto that bridge. That would be... really the purpose is for emergency vehicle access 'cause you can't have...
Where will everybody else go?
Right, if the bridge is gone, where does everybody else go?
So for state route traffic, we will sign as a detour starting in Blue Ridge and going around 60.
Are you still planning to put the bridge from Schoolhouse down into Tennessee on the other side?
The bypass.
So it's the bypass bridge. I don't know what you mean by Schoolhouse, though. I mean, there's the road there.
Seems to me like... With the cart before the horse.
So there'll be a new road. Well, there'll be a new road that takes off at the roundabout and then there'll be a bridge over the river in the railroad in Tennessee and they'll do a loop back around. It's right here.
We should've done that one first instead of the road.
I don't think he can help that.
I mean, that would've been ideal, but let's say, I mean, speaking round terms, let's say that's six years off. What happens if this bridge needs to be lowered or closed in that timeframe?
Get that...
I'd say we'll have the same problem with me.
As a detour, at that point, you know, the bridge is potentially closed.
Like they're saying that's six years off. Why can't you just put your temporary bridge there?
Can you move your temporary bridge where the new bridge will be?
For the bypass bridges? If that's six years off, why can't you put your temporary bridge there?
Just down the road. Where we go between the park and the church up there? Can you point it out for me?
It's here.
How close would that be to First Baptist Church?
In the park.
In that park.
Speaking for the church, if they did take that parking lot, would GDOT be willing to... you know, we've got that grass lot to the east or to the west. Would they be willing to pave an area or make additional parking to offset what they're losing?
The church owns that.
Okay, how would they affect the park?
It would... we'd have a road through there for a year and a half and then have to store it.
Is it only gonna take the parking lot on that side of the park?
Yeah, and that's not a question I can really answer because it's an option we really had not pursued because of the...
There used to be a house there.
We're gonna have to go back and get that in more detail.
There was a house there that was big enough, so I don't think you're gonna lose much parking. But will the church be compensated while all this is going on?
Yeah, I can't get into right-of-way negotiations. There are mechanisms for that, but this particular case, I'd still rather wait for a right-of-way.
I mean, if you look where they put the boats in the river, that's straight across into our parking lot of the church. I mean, there's an old concrete slab there that was a building that, you know, from there, if you're saying 50 feet from there to the next, I mean, you probably can't drive around the church, but...
I personally, I like what Michael said about replacing the trust bridge with a permanent temporary, permanent bridge, it's a temporary option. And then, you know, traffic can be rerouted to that, and make it wide enough with sidewalks, I mean, you could use it for pedestrian traffic also while the other bridge is being replaced.
How many people are really just attached to that old bridge? I mean, does everybody, are you just totally against losing it and having a new bridge there? The one at Shalapert is really pretty.
They did a good job.
No, I I for one, I mean.
Um, I think that's a sensible.
Here's the thing for all of us. It's gonna change here, and it has changed. And it's always gonna change. And you either accept some of the change and get the best thing you can get for the citizens, for the business people, and for all concerned, and live with it, in ten years, nobody won't know the difference, they'll come through and think that's the way it always was.
I'm not gonna be here anyway.
Man, listen, listen up, say, I'm not, you know, cause I'm on the wrong side of fifty myself. But, you know, honestly, you you think about all the businesses that were here.
Yeah.
In town, there's not one that I know of left that was here when I was younger, even when I was twenty. And, you know, I'm not pushing for us to do one way or the other, but there are things that we are gonna have to just go with.
Sounds the most feasible to me.
These gentlemen are kind enough, and if they're gonna listen to our wishes on that, that's that's as good an answer as you can get, you know, a whole lot better than no. So that's that's just what I'm saying, you know, you can be. We've got a good town here, and we've got really good people, really good people, and we've got good people that work for our city. And we can make this work if we all work together on it.
If it comes to our house and from the acting company, can you tell me how long it's gonna take and how that will involve our house? Because the surveying's been done on our property.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
Brooks. Brooks.
So the plan was that the the grassy area is right across from the rafting, um, there's a magnolia tree there, that's kind of.
That's ours.
We own that.
So that that's where the bridge was, we were looking at putting it in that area.
I'm early there.
Right, right, right where that magnolia tree is basically now.
What is that, we'll come up and get the house too?
That was not the plan, um, but we don't know the answer to that until you have the survey and, you know, how the grades work out. I mean, we're not far enough along in that option to be able to answer that kind of question, just yet.
When we don't even like people being answered.
Sure, you know, it looks like we're gonna have a lot of different options, and we just need to pick the very best one for for everybody. I do not like the one going up that street myself, I agree with Ms. Pittman, that that is just not a good.
Waste.
A good thing, that would be the absolute worst. Anything else, I think, we can work around and live with. And and that's why we need to work with y'all and, you know, let us know what's going on, what you think, and we can have some extra meetings here and make sure everybody knows what's going on and what you're seeing, and work from from there if that is agreeable. All you can come.
Terry, this question for them, will y'all come to the, contact us and meet with us at the church and tell us what that would entail?
Yeah, um, the question would be of timing and.
Well, we can meet anytime you can.
Sure, but I wouldn't have a lot to tell you about that right now. We we we've got to go back and look at these options, and it may involve having to get survey out there.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at, making a decision?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a timeframe, um, we are looking to go to to the public with this project. Um, Nathan, what's the? Uh, sometime next June.
I think they're gonna send out some flyers and start sending out postcards and putting up signs for the first public hearing where everybody will be notified, and that will go up in, uh, June, and then there'll be another one in July. So so this summer, you should see signs up and everything, wherever they'll set for a meet place, which I'm sure will be bigger than this.
Let me ask you a question, they're talking, Michael's talking about building the new bridge. I say you build that new bridge, and then the the new bridge that it's always been called, say it's condemned, is the state gonna build another bridge?
Sure.
You got a new bridge that's got pedestrian traffic, and then you got one that's condemned.
So.
What would what would cause them just not to build a second bridge?
I I wanna make sure I'm not confusing the terminology here, so we're talking about splitting a new bridge where the trust bridge is at.
Steel bridge, steel bridge. Or if you put a brand-new bridge there that can have traffic plus plus pedestrians.
That would serve as a detour bridge.
Okay.
While we're replacing the concrete bridge.
So you're gonna build two bridges?
That that would be what we're looking at, because we don't wanna have to realize the state run by us.
And you're now off the timing, you have got feelings, you think the state's gonna build two brand-new bridges?
Sure, I mean, any option we're talking about. Now, the the question is building a permanent bridge versus building a detour bridge, there's additional costs there. But it's, I mean, this is a hard problem to solve. I mean, it, this is, we're having to do things we wouldn't normally consider doing.
Well, Michael threw something in, so I'm gonna throw something in, once you put this temporary bridge up, is there a way when y'all get through with the new bridge, you can block it off and let that be a pedestrian bridge between Copper Hill and McCaswell and leave it? Or McCaswell and McCaswell and leave it?
Alright, so the the pedestrian bridge at what location?
Uh, at our church, I don't.
At the church.
Yeah, at the church.
Sure, that would make the temporary impacts permanent.
Yeah, yeah. Throw a new wrinkle in it, that would give us a pedestrian bridge, which would be up from the park to the.
You know, nothing's impossible, I I can't commit to that, but it's definitely an option we could look at.
How's the property in the park timed? Does it time?
I would I would have to find that out, I I'm not sure, I know it was purchased by the city from Josh or C D R family. We would have to look that up and see how that is done, but that part there is the older part of the park where the where the they go in the river. So that would be kindly a different.
Direction driver.
Different section, yeah. Yeah, if you drove into the park, it would be the left side by the older pavilion.
Where we were at.
Playground, yes. Yeah, that there were two different sections of the property that were purchased there. And the newest part is on the, if you're standing there looking across the river to the church, the right-hand side is the newest part, the left-hand side was there several several years before the other part was purchased in.
So Brandon, you guys aware of any bridge ever being built on a park or temporary bridge on a park in the state?
I'm not, I'm not saying it's never been done, but, um, I certainly have never done it in one of the projects that I've been involved with. Again, we, the special category of four F with churches is is four F as well, we try to stay off of those impacts.
If that becomes an option that you guys like and everybody likes, I think we can get some help from the federal piece of that, I know we can.
Yeah. So just just to clarify, you said the like the public meeting in June or July for notification, so that me, at that point, you guys will have made a decision, is that the truth?
So ideally, we would have a preferred alternative at that point, if we don't make a decision until after that meeting.
Let's presenting the options.
Presenting the options and the preferred alternative.
Terry.
Yes, ma'am.
The title is in our name, in the city.
In the city's name.
One one good thing about this meeting is that there is options on out business areas where you haven't had any with the L T V, but but there is some options, and the scary part of it is if the inspectors come back and do an inspection on that bridge and and warrant that it's even deteriorated more, then we got then we got real issues. So but right now, we have options, and I think it's this is the right way to go about it.
Yeah, this is why all of us asked them to come so we could see what options we have. And, you know, that's better than none, so you got three or four different ways we can look at it, and all of us together can work with them. We're gonna have a couple more meetings, you say, by the time you do that, then you have one or two extra meetings. And we we'll see, cause they gotta have time to see what we're asking of them too, and, uh, you know, so.
May I ask another question? Point out where the park is up there for me.
Yes.
Right there, and then the church is right there also. It's not there off the park.
Even if you could go with the option that Mr. Bryson had asked about leaving it as a as a pedestrian bridge, we we could actually relieve a lot of pressure in town when they get off of the the train. And we have looked at some other options on that, we can get some extra money to make sure that gets there, plus extra signage that really slows people down. And they would be able to come across there, you wouldn't have the red lock you have right there at I G A where everybody's just walking out in the road.
Which poses a danger.
You know.
I don't wanna throw Mr. Clyde behind the bus, but at one point, he was here, we all walked from here down to the park, looked stuff over, and suggested that the bridge go there. He mentioned about how hard it would be, but he left there saying, nothing is impossible.
I believe him.
So, you know, this is a really good starting place, everybody gets to hear what is going on and what's not, so you've got, you hear everything. And that's what we're here for too, we're here to listen to what you folks want. Uh, we will meet back with them as often as we can and have more meetings like this too, and maybe have just a town hall meeting where we can all talk about it, and maybe a little bit bigger place where everybody can be seated and be comfortable. But this is what's important to me, is all of us work together and keep the town together instead of letting everything just get away from us.
And two, if, you know, the church agreed for the temporary bridge, then like David talked about turning it into a pedestrian, that could be also another beautification project, going over, walking over, you know, to get on the casual side and, you know, and ease foot traffic, cause, um, the weekend especially, it's really dangerous, I know pedestrians do have the right-of-way, but not when you walk one across twenty of you, not to get, you know, separately, and and people get pretty frustrated. But, you know, a pedestrian bridge would be a good, uh, option after the department, other than the vehicle bridge was.
It could be an asset to the park.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
One other word, Mr. Mayor, uh, so I'm starting my third year in the legislature in January, and I just wanna put a plug in for Grant and Nathaniel, I call him Nathaniel, I think you guys are probably making, but I know this Nathaniel. I call these guys, in my three, start my third year, uh, a lot, call Grant maybe weekly sometimes, but our district's blessed to have these two guys here in our district, cause they always show up.
That's true.
They they they're listening to our options, and, uh, so if we just give DMT another billion dollars, I'm sure we can make this happen, Grant. But we've also got a DMT board member right here, living right here in our district as well, so.
The chairman.
McCaswell's very well represented, taken care of, so just appreciate what these guys do, it's a, they're in a, they're in a hard position, but they they show up, they listen, and, uh, I think we'll, I think we'll get a good option here.
I think so, and, uh, again, I appreciate the gentleman coming and sitting here and lighting the fire, that's not, that's not the best scenario to get to come in and sit in. But I do appreciate everyone here coming here to talk about things, and if you have other questions, I'm sure we're not gonna be able to answer, but we'll get them from them, and, um, like, they have, they call me every time that they got something, and I greatly appreciate that. So I I feel good about that, yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Concerning the church, cause of all that parties committee, um, just for information, if the road comes through there and it comes up almost to the church, and you'll, I'm assuming you'll have a fence or something that would block the traffic or whatever, or would you just be? Cause it's gonna take our back parking lot too, if we don't have access to come on around, so we'll lose that side plus behind the church. Because that's the only way that you can get on it around the church, so that's kind of confusing to me about how that would work.
I I don't think I have an answer for you just yet as to what it would look like, and anything I said would just be a guess until we really start laying it out.
And when they do, if they let me know, I'll make sure that you get first hand. If that's an option, we can kind of come up with and and make it work. Okay, these gentlemen have their kind of long road, we're pretty good with right now, what we need to know. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
See you, Grant.
Yes, I am.
Hey, let's, uh, let's get back to, uh, the rest of the meeting, we'll have to get that, um, no, we'll get, we got the new business board, and, uh, we need to, uh, bring up the.
Hey, guys, hey, it's back to me.
Need to bring up the, uh, employee Christmas bones that we usually give, I would, uh, need a motion to implement that.
Five hundred dollars?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Give five hundred dollar Christmas bones to employees.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the, uh, the police department software would, uh, I'd like to ask Susan to kind of explain a little bit more about the problems that we're having with some software issues with our current, uh.
Product.
Yeah, product, yes, she's.
So the the software that was purchased year before last is falling apart, it does not do the job for the police to be able to answer calls in their in their cars, and our understanding, there's been several other police departments that have dropped them because of the, their inability to do the job for us, so might you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, sir, it's the software system that control our computers in our car, so when we stop a vehicle, we run the license plate, we're supposed to get a return of who that vehicle belongs to, and it's not working.
We're supposed to get a return of who that vehicle belongs to and it's not working. Uh, the system we have now is Justice One. More than unlikely, they're gonna be going out of business. Their I T department is already starting to go out of business. So we're having to switch. Blue Ridge is switching. Most of the surrounding counties are switching as well to a new software system. Pete, Pete's in here now. He can attest. It's, it's terrible.
Terrible.
And, uh, so, um, yeah, we need to switch to that new system and it's gonna take about a three or four month process because you gotta integrate everything through the cloud and all of that. So, uh, something we gotta do.
Need a motion, ma'am?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the next couple of items is, uh, related to the water department, the Jason's department. There's a printer that has kind of ended its life. And there is a, uh, a deal that we really need to purchase a camera. And this camera will go, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, around two hundred feet up a line. So if they can find exactly where it is and these cameras are expensive, but you're gonna be saving the time, the money of the crews being out there and having to dig several feet and us having to replace all that, reseat it, where you can find it and go right to it and repair that. That is the reason for the purchase of the camera. It will really take a lot of time and, uh, customer will get better service off of that too. So, uh, let Jason finish up with those two things.
I know in the past, we, we've had subcontractors come out and use this camera and system and it's been, it's very beneficial. And obviously their price is very high to get, have them come out. They usually give you an hourly price. But it will, uh, to be able to use this internally will be very benefit, I think, to the water department.
How much money are we talking about?
That, can you remember how much?
I think it's right around, it's either ten or eleven thousand.
I think it is, yeah. That's, ten thousand is what I have in my head, but I was trying to get a daily data. Do you have the ten thousand? Okay, so ten thousand dollars. But it'll be a, it'll be a good asset. We can take it out of our equipment, uh, item on the budget. That's all I've got.
Any, any more discussion? Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
A second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the next item is really not a, uh, vote, voteable item as of yet, but we were approached by the, uh, the Linsky group. They want to put a sign on the, what, we all talked about the old thing. So I am too. It was, I used, it always was Dr. Javly's old building, the one right on the corner. Uh, they want to put up a, a sign and I think we have the size here and I can leave it up here for you to look. It's like five feet, four inches tall. It's fifteen point four inches long. And it will be, is my understanding, I believe Denise, it's gonna be an L E D type
An L E D, yes.
Type sign. And, uh, even though it is not that, I do appreciate the fact that they thought enough of everybody in the city to ask if, uh, you know, that was kind of, we thought it would be a good thing. And I greatly appreciate that. They really didn't have to, but they did. And I, I appreciate the fact that that happened. So we're thinking of the city and that, so.
What kind of sign is?
A, a welcome sign, uh, but can also have local events.
Welcome or what, what's that?
Yeah, it's gonna be a digital sign that can change.
Digital.
It can change and put different events, even like parades and things we have here, an event in town, road races or, or anything like that. My, my understanding, am I correct on that? Okay, uh, I can, excuse me. Okay, alright, yes, I'll just back to the printer. Excuse me, I skipped that part. Uh, need a motion on the printer.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. I guess you say I'm due on the job. Okay, but the, the other part of that is, uh, you can put pretty much any event on there.
Correct, it's not animated. It's not a lot animated on a, on a highlight. So it's just a static.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you for asking and that's greatly appreciated. Okay, we'll go to the report of the other business. Any council members have anything they need to bring up? That you know of? Anyone? Okay, and of course, Ms. Courtney is out still on her honeymoon, so she'll be back the next meeting. Uh, Denise, do you have anything? Okay, we, we have been, uh, told that around the first of the year, uh, Dr. Woods is going to retire and he has sold his business to a practice that will be a doctor and a kind of like emergency clinic, uh, in that same building. Uh, that's what we're being told. Supposedly it's a man and his wife from, uh, Cleveland or Chattanooga. And, uh, so, uh, that, that will be a good asset to our community to have an emergency clinic right there. Pretty, pretty handy here. Just in Tennessee. So, uh, with that, uh, Michael, do you have anything you need?
So we, uh, had four hundred and seventy-eight activity calls in the past thirty days. Got new flags. They're here to go on the steel bridge. I know they're faded out right now. Got those. We should be putting them up Thursday. And we'll see a lot of Christmas lights being put up too. So our light up McCasville is the twenty-ninth, day after Thanksgiving, right around dark. That's when we usually do it. Our Christmas parade is, uh, the seventh of December. Of course, we line up on East Tennessee Avenue. It's the Kalanis Christmas Parade. Starts at two o'clock. Also, if anybody'd like to donate, we're taking donations for Shop With A Cop. Any businesses or individuals that want to donate, um, we'll be doing that, that, that Saturday morning as well at seven o'clock. We'll be meeting at the middle school and, uh, be bussing the children over to the Walmart there in Woodridge and letting them buy themselves something for Christmas. So if anybody wants to donate with that, just let me know. Like I said earlier, Mayor, we got the inspection back on the steel bridge. It's the best inspection we've had in the past fifteen years, so just proud about that. Uh, it's in our report, just like what is in front of the leader there. Um, I'll let y'all see that if y'all want a copy. So all this technology and stuff that we're getting in our police cars as far as our plot cameras, our computer systems, our body cams, most departments tack on a ten percent technology fee on top of their citations. And I believe that's something that we're gonna have to do to keep up with times and the cost of the technology to do our job. So I'd ask the council if they would to make it effective immediately, uh, to add a ten percent technology fee on top of our citations. And like I said, the violator pays for that fee. The city don't pay for it. It'd be the violator that receives the citation. If I could give a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, we need second?
Second.
All in favor?
And two other things. We got the signs put up on Hillcrest, uh, the speed limit signs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You did a good job.
Thank you. And, uh, we're trying to improve some of the signage in town. We got new signs put up on the steel bridge as well. I always want to talk about the other side of the steel bridge. I guess you could say that road there between J J's and the new bridge or the steel bridge needs to be paved. But I believe we need to hold off on that to see what G dot wants to do.
I don't think so.
Uh, instead of spending fifty or sixty thousand dollars right now on asphalt, see what their plan is on that before we proceed with that. That's all I have.
Okay, now we got down to y'all's time. Do you have anything that you need to bring up that we need to look at in the city whatsoever? Well, that's what we're supposed to be doing here. Yes, ma'am?
Tell me about Nancy and when she'll be leaving and what, what we might do for her.
Well, uh, Nancy is gonna be working a little bit longer.
Oh, I know.
Probably into next year sometime, sometimes part-time, sometimes full-time, uh, depending upon vacations and that sort of thing. And we still have some things that we need to let her help Denise with to make sure that she is up, up to speed on the audits and different things that are coming up pretty quick. So she has agreed to
I'm glad she is. And I want to say
I appreciate her doing that.
I want to say thank you to you, 'cause you've got a large job ahead of you and we know that. Depend on Michael.
Well, we got, we got good people here. We can talk with each other. That's just like, you know, we can't, we can't do anything here without everybody because we can't do anything without the ladies here in the City Hall that
You're appreciated all the
They do everything. They do everything, you know? They make sure all the bills go out. They pay the bills. They take the phone calls. And then we wouldn't have a city if it wasn't for the water department. We wouldn't have nothing. Zero. But then we would have, not have a city if it wasn't for the police. Because you don't have a police force, everything falls apart and you get people coming in here that we don't need.
And Terry, I can hear you so well and I want you to know that because, you know, I'd be sitting up there if I had to hear, but
I appreciate that. But we got, we got awful good people here, so it makes the job a lot easier. And y'all too, coming in here voicing concerns, that's what we need to hear. You know, you, you can't fix anything if you don't know what, what the problem is. And so that's, that's what it's about. You don't make me mad if you come in here. I'm not gonna get mad about it. It's a job. And we're gonna do the very best we can. And that's what it's about. And everybody here will do the same thing. You know, we might disagree, but that's no problem. We fix it. We gotta fix it and it's gotta be fixed. So that's what it's about. Okay, any, any comments? Anybody else? Okay, then make a motion to
I'll win.
Second, please. Any opposed? Thank you all very much for coming.